For Monday, September 19th, would everyone please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed. Can I ask for someone to approve our agenda?
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Thank you for showing up today. Is there a second?
I'm second. A motion.
All right. Any discussion or any amendments?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I have to comment. I believe that we need to reword, let's see, the item regarding the Purchasing Department. Where as the item ten, the last word, two words, purchasing director, I think they need to be Chief Financial Officer, CFO, because that's what the amendment deals.
Thank you. All right, so in the number 10 description, that should read, instead of Purchasing Director?
Correct. I think.
Mr. Thomas?
The title of the code, that's why it says what it's named.
Okay. It doesn't need to be changed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Brian, I hope you could hear that. Mr. Thomas said that...
Yeah. Okay, well, then maybe we need to change the, also the line of the title to authority and duties of purchasing director to include, and CFO, because you're adding in language regarding the purchasing, the CFO and the purchasing director. So perhaps the title should be changed.
That's a point well taken, Senator.
Sir, and I, it's a small matter, sir, and I don't think it really affects, affects the decision here of the financial, it's really when it goes to county council, perhaps you need to amend that as well.
No, point well taken. So we're going to add and CFO after purchasing director in the title.
Correct.
Okay, good. No, thank you. Anybody else with regards to the agenda? All right, without objection, we will then approve the amended, amended agenda. And without objection, we have now approved our agenda. So let's move on then to approval of minutes from September 8th, 2022. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. A second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Passment. So it's been seconded. Any other comments before we approve? All right, we're going to approve the minutes from September 8th without objection. Are there any objections? All right, seeing no objections. Let's move on then to our citizens' comment. And, Ms. Sarah, do we have anyone present or online or that has contacted us that would like to speak today? All right, anyone in the crowd that would like to speak today? Yep, yes, sir.
We'd like to speak about respective agenda items. I don't know if you'd like to hold that out until we get to the agenda item, or go ahead and come on?
Probably go ahead and do that now.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for coming, Mayor.
Good to see you all. There we go, okay. Well, I'm Mayor Stephen Murray from the city of Beaufort. And, Mr. Chairman, members of committee, thank you for your service to the citizens of Beaufort County. I'm here today on the Myrtle Park fund request. As many of you know, I was the founding chairman of the Economic Development Corporation, worked with members of county council, member of the municipalities. Alice Howard was a big part of those conversations, as was Councilman Rodman. And we made a deal to the council and to the citizens when we structured the corporation. And that deal was, we were going to be very business minded, we were going to be very responsible with public resource, we were going to report back on a regular basis. And we thought we could do things a little differently in economic development than how they had been done previously in Beaufort County. However, if we didn't meet our commitments and we didn't meet the goals and metrics that we set out and said that we would, we would come back and say we need to do something a little differently. The good news is, I think most folks would agree that we have exceeded expectations with the Economic Development Corporation and with the partnerships, and mostly because of the resources that this council has extended to the regional group. Just over a quarter of a billion dollars in capital investment in five years, over 1,300 committed jobs in all of our jurisdictions across Beaufort County, and an average wage of over $47,000 a year, which is important to remember that the city of Beaufort's per capita income is just shy of $30,000 a year. So I hope we are all very proud and take a lot of credit in this effort where we're actually diversifying Beaufort County's economy and providing better jobs for the people who have to get up every day and work for a living, right? And again, that's a testament to Beaufort County and the resources that you've put into the entity. In that spirit, two years ago, the Myrtle Park deal was sort of unfolding, and I give John O'Toole and Charlie Stone a lot of credit for helping to shape that deal. You've got the jobs there, you've got capital investment on that site, that project is closing out, those funds are now being released back into sort of county coffers. Two years ago, this council, I believe in a unanimous vote, said that those funds would go into the Economic Development Corp. site funds, so we could continue this good work. And now, over the last couple of weeks, there's a recommendation from your staff that, in fact, that money shouldn't go into the Economic Development Corp.'s coffers. And in your agenda, there's a recommendation that about $90,000 go to the corporation, and around $600,000 approximate numbers would be at your, at your leisure, where you could direct it into the general fund. So I appreciate staff bringing that to attention, and I would just ask today that we go ahead and sort of kill two birds with one stone, make good on the commitment that this council made back in 2020, direct those funds into the site fund, because there are a number of priorities in minority entrepreneurship, additional product development, a whole host of really good things that are happening around this county, that the Economic Development Corp. has made commitments of that money. And if it's not in place, we won't be able to carry on the good work that we've been doing on behalf of the county and other jurisdictions for the past five years. Thank you for your time today, and again, for your service to the citizens of Beaufort County.
Mayor Murray, thank you for coming. Thank you for your service as well. Anyone else like to make a comment before we move on? Yeah, Senator Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in regard to, I think it's a matter on your agenda, it's in regard to the Hilton Head Number One Public Service District. Wanted to let you all know that they have submitted an application to the Southland Rural and Infrastructure Authority to expand its capacity at its Jenkins Island Reserve Osmosis Drinking Water Treatment Facility from 4 million gallons a day to 6 million gallons a day. And I submitted a letter on their behalf to the Infrastructure Authority. However, I wanted to kind of put that in some context. That money, that $500 million that they're going to try to get a piece of was set aside by Governor McMaster, and I've got a copy of the criteria that he set forth in regard to the allocation of that money to increase economic development in rural counties around Tier Three and Tier Four counties, counties that don't possess the resources or tax base to upgrade or replace their water systems. So I wanted to provide a little bit of context and some caution in regard to the relatively problematic nature of that grant request, as you consider this local one. I'll do what I can, as will the delegation, to try to get an allocation of these statewide monies. I did want you to know that it's problematic that we can get that money, because they are set aside for the rural counties. Just want to make you all aware of that.
Thank you, Senator Davis. Last call. Anybody else? Great, we're going to close the citizens' comment and move on to our update from our county, Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Dale Butts. Mr. Butts, thank you for coming today.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Good afternoon, everyone. Just a very brief update from the Finance Committee. I wanted to remind you all, or if you haven't heard at all, that our transparency portal is up and running on the county website. So if you go to the main page at beaufortcountysc.gov and click on transparency, that'll take you to a list of various interests that you might have. You'll find financial reports, our spending portal, bidding opportunities, and other useful information. So you guys or any citizens that might be interested in that, that is there and up and running. Two and a half months now into the new fiscal year, also wanted to let you know that we've seen a slight decrease in deeds filed and revenue collected via those deeds, or about 20% down compared with this same time last year. That's simply information that we can keep you posted on, and certainly something that we will watch as we progress through the fiscal year. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Do you think the 20% is closer to the pre-COVID time? Is that...
You do see a bit of delay in what the deeds office sees versus the time that property actually closes, you know, and so, yeah, it's possible that there's, there is some lag there, but simply numbers right now, when you compare it to this time last year, you know. Of course, that can change in an instant, you just never know in that market, but wanted to pass that along to you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Any, any comments or questions from council? Still seeing? So, thank you very much. Let's move on to our agenda items. And our first agenda item is number eight, Discussion and Presentation of Year-to-Date Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2023, and our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Hayes Williams. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good morning, good afternoon, Chairman and Councilman. First of all, I want to give you all an audit update and kind of where we are right now. The, we're still in the process of closing the 2022 year. We're reconciling everything. The best way to put a benchmark to that is, we, our auditors have a database called SeriLinken, is where they request items. I'm proud to say that we're at 55.32% of fulfilled items on there right now, which is, I don't know, is way, is a lot better than ever since I've been here and probably ever before. So we're making big strides in that regard. The finance has done a soft close for the financial statements in units for 2022 and kind of rolled everything over. We won't do a hard close, because there may be additional entries from the auditor or on our part until the audit's finished, and we get the final numbers and they're prevalued to do the hard close. But we're putting the finishing touches on everything. We expect it to be done in late September, early October, and we're hoping the auditors will go and start their, their audit process by mid to late October and into November. So that's where we are on the audit with our annual audit. Last year, exactly a year ago, we had an internal audit, and we had our results here from Elliot Davis. Elliot Davis gave us a report on processes and procedures for finance procurement, disabilities and special needs. So you'll see the BSN people over there. Hey, guys. And Dave Thomas back there, if y'all have any questions. But really what I'm going to do, we had a lot of things that we needed to address in finance, and, and we've had a very busy time since then, getting staffed up and getting things right.
Let me go to...
But right now, we, Beaufort County has expanded its reporting of the financing committee, Finance Committee, to include reports on the general fund, enterprise funds, and real purchase of property. We're planning on expanding the reporting to include debt service funds and capital project funds over the next year, as time allows us to get those going. One of the findings was that our, our finance employees weren't taken off at least one full week a year. I'm happy to say that we are properly staffed up, and everybody's taking at least one full week off. I plan to take more than that, hopefully around the holidays, because I won't be worrying about having the audit over my head, is what I'm hoping. There were some issues with reconciliations not getting done timely, our payables and receivables, we're doing those quarterly, and capital assets, we're doing those quarterly right now. And the reason those are quarterly, or those are really more... And the reason those are quarterly, or those are really more accruals at the end of the year than they are on a monthly basis, but we've gotten all of our cash reconciliations, all our bank reconciliations to be done monthly, which is a huge leap from when I got here. Let's see, there was a finding about posting, people posting their own journal entries. We put safeguards into place that no, no finance employee can post their own journal entry or budget entries. That has worked out well. We had some issues with reconciling our fixed assets. So we've hired a fixed assets manager, and he's right now in the process, right now he's in the office trying to get all the audit schedules done for the auditor, so he can get the audit done. But as soon as he gets those done, he's going to get back out in the field, and he's going department by department, looking for tags on equipment and vehicles and anything that he possibly can, and reconciling them to the statement. And sometimes he's finding stuff that needs to be on there, sometimes he's, you know, taking stuff off that has been there since I was probably two years old. So he's in the process of cleaning it up, he's doing a very good job. We'll be giving you a report from him next time. And finance is currently working, there's an issue with somebody requesting funds and signing off on the same thing, and what we're doing is we're trying to automate everything in Munis to where you have a purchase order, and you just submit the invoices, and it'll give us a nice audit trail, and everything will be done through Munis, and that will be a really step in the right direction. So that was from finance in the internal audit. There were other things from BSN and purchasing, but they've made their changes and done what they needed to do. Did y'all have any questions from them? Do y'all want to get up and say anything? Everybody's being bashful today.
Do we have any questions for our CFO, council? I can't see everybody, so speak up or raise your hand. Mr. Williams, I think you got off easy today.
I did, I did. Anyways, I want to go, the next thing is, I want to go over some financial highlights of what we're doing in finance. And one big thing is, we're doing a chart of accounts redesign, and probably, when I came on, I didn't know any better. I thought that, thought it, Whitney definitely thought it when she came on. Our chart of accounts is, to say overboard would be an understatement. It is, it is, we have 40 different things for supplies, office supplies, copier supplies, pest control supply, I mean, supplies are supplies, let's just put it under one line item. So we're going in the process of redesigning our chart of accounts to make them more efficient and more transparent, and that's been a big lift. And Denise Christmas and Christine Webb have been leading that off right now, and they're piggybacking off what Ms. Richland did when she was there earlier. We're also working on, with IT, to do purchase card integration. So a lot, a lot of managers and employees throughout the county have what's called a purchase card, which is basically a credit card, where they can go out and buy supplies and whatnot. And in the past, if you bought something from Staples, it wouldn't go to the Staples vendor, it would just go to the line item, like it'd go to 1,011, 115010, or whatever it was. And so you weren't, for 1099 purposes, you had to go back in and recreate it based on the statements. There is an option with our vendor in Munis that now we can upload it and track all the purchases by vendor, so we're going that way, and it ought to make our 1099 process a lot easier. We're doing training with our employees on a monthly or bi-monthly basis, and trying to teach them things that they need to know to help out. We're in the process of hiring a budget manager currently, and hopefully we'll have that by the next Finance Committee meeting. And as a part of that, we'll be working on a budget calendar, which I hope to have to y'all by the next Finance Committee meeting. And we're also training in ClearGov, which is how we did the budget last year, and it was very interactive, and everybody liked it a lot, so we're sticking with that. So that's all the budget stuff. And we hired a new grants administrator, Ryan Muth, who just started today, so he had half a day of doing stuff with HR, and he's just getting his wheels, feet underneath him, kind of gave him the day. But I plan on having our new budget manager, and he to come to the next Finance meeting, so I can introduce y'all properly. So anyways, then, any questions on anything that we're doing there?
Just a question from me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
When you group everything under supplies, do you have a way of doing a subset by coding the account, so that supplies for a particular department could be analyzed if necessary?
It could be, we're trying to get it under the umbrella of supplies right now, but a prime example is, like, capital purchases are all 54s, and then you'd have a capital purchase for every piece of equipment that you ever bought, ever. So you're almost starting to run out of 54 numbers that you can put them under, so you're kind of doing that. Supplies is kind of, you know, you could if you really need to, but if you're in mosquito control, I mean, a supply is a supply, it could be a mosquito control supply or a supply supply. You know, if we see that there's a real need to split out, especially for grants or any kind of purpose like that, I mean, we're willing to amend the, amend the chart of accounts, but we're trying to simplify it and keep it simple, so everybody can be on the same page with it right now, is really what we're working towards.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, is that your? Yes.
Yes, I have the same concern that Joe Passman has, when you start looking at the chart of accounting, and you not able to enterprise that, those areas, how do you know who's actually doing what? That's, that's my concern as well, so if you can work that out, it would be very helpful. And I understand having a whole lot of chart of accounts and run out of numbers, but, you know, at some point in time, I like to know whether mosquito control is doing what they're supposed to do, or they're spending more than they should be spending based on their budget process, and wouldn't be able to do that if you just have everybody lumping together itself.
Well, it, we're not, when we say we're lumping together, it's not dissimilar items, it's for ease of reporting. Really, if you look at our chart of accounts, specifically our org codes, it is overwhelming. I don't have an exact number, but I could run the report for you, and you'd be like, yeah, that kind of makes sense, what we're trying to do. We're just trying to simplify it for all the users, so, but thank y'all for your comments. Anyways, that kind of leads us into, into our actual revenues, expenses of the general fund. Currently, we're at about 4% of where we should be, of the 16.67% that we would be at this point during the year, and that's really to be expected with ad valorem taxes being the majority of our revenue, about 76%, and those aren't arriving until December and January. We do have a couple lags, intergovernmental stuff that we get, state aid from subdivisions and stuff like that, anything from South Carolina DOR, we're not getting that until after the first quarter's done. And fines and forfeitures and miscellaneous revenues, they're lagging, but we'll think they'll come back by the end of the year. And then the transfers into the general fund from the other funds, we typically wait to do that in the third month of the quarter instead of the first quarter, to give them some time to build up some of their cash. So that leads us to the expenditures, and this is a little bit different, we've changed the format a little bit, so we've done it to spent items versus spent and encumbered. So this is really the money that has gone out the door, other than the money that's obligated, because you basically, I'll give you, for instance, you have a contract that you negotiate for $900,000, that amount's encumbered, but you may have only spent $10,000 on it, so it's a little bit, it makes it unclear about what has actually left the building. And so I just put it to spent, you know, it doesn't have to stay this way, I just like to look at it better. But right now, we're at 12.2% spent versus 16.6%, which would be two months into the year. So we're about, we're a little low. I'm sure people are going to ramp stuff up. I sent an email out, of course, early July, to make sure that they all got their capital expenditures done. But most of these are lagged, public works is lagging, but it'll correct by year-end. The public welfare, it's lagging, but the Human Services Alliance hasn't gone out, and that'll be going out early, later on this fall. Audrey and them will have their suggestions for us, I'm sure that'll be coming forward. But that'll get that back up. And then the economic development that we have budgeted for this job and site fund is $674,000, and that'll be based on the requests that'll be coming from y'all from the EDC. So there's also a new schedule in here for y'all, and it's the Capital Improvements Funds, which we split out last year when we did one of the budget amendments, and this year for the budget. And this is kind of a multi-year capital fund, so you'll kind of see, we have ad valorem taxes, and we have use of prior year fund balance, and it is technically falls underneath the general fund, but it's more of a committed fund balance. But we had ordinances from '22, '22/31, which is our surplus, which was a property acquisition of TCL Pepper Hall Road Improvements, EMS vehicles and capital purchases, Detention Center Arthur Horn Building and the Parks and Rec MC Riley Pool. And then the current from the, this, as current is with year '22/35, Helms and Way, we'll also see the additional one for $900,000 that was passed last, when the ordinance actually gets signed and comes through, another $900,000 for there. And then you have the current year budgeted ordinance, so your vice ordinance kind of gets them all together, and then you have your actual, so we have about 302 actually spent right now, but that's going to wake up. I've seen a lot of stuff coming through this past month, and it's going to, it's going to start waking up here. But that's really all that I have for the financial background. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? I wonder if you're getting off easy today.
One quick, yeah, one quick question.
Mr. Hervishon.
Thank you so much. Where are we as far as the internal audit process?
We are, we are working on that. We've discussed the purchasing, we'll have it on the agenda, I'm hoping next Finance Committee meeting. But yeah, that was, that was on, we talked about it at the agenda review, we took it off, but...
And this was on our agenda, I think, back, on our agenda, I think, back August 22nd, and we kicked it back to you, Eric, or someone else, to ask for more information, and just want to see who will be coming forward, whatever information we've got since that time. I think we're checking on availabilities and whether other utility companies would be asking for money and things like that, so any update from, from our last meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I recused myself from this item last time it came before council, and I'm doing so again today, and they've got my form, so I'm going to hop out, and then I'll be back on the agenda items.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hervishon. Mr. Hervishon has recused himself, so, I think he did last time as well, so, Mr. Greenway?
So we, we have money in the ARPA account for funding these types of projects in there. It's a limited amount of money, so what the Finance Committee wants to recommend to council that they fund this amount, there is money in the ARPA account for such projects. Once that money is used up, then of course, you all will have to evaluate whether or not you want to extend that into the future. One of the things that we have discussed is that instead of doing, using that fund for allocating direct money to the project, is that it might be better for the council to allocate money from ARPA, that $3 million from ARPA to the various council districts, give each council member so much money per district to allow them to fund projects within their district on their own. I don't have a position either way, we have the money to fund these infrastructure projects. We did not reach out to any other entity to find out if they were planning to submit for requests, because once we do that, I can bet you, they will. So we did not do that part of it, so I don't have any real way of knowing what else is out there in the way of coming requests. So I'm not sure that that answers your question, but we as a staff are comfortable with funding this particular project, we think it's a need, it's what the ARPA money was designed to do. So I'll leave it at that, and I answer any questions you all may have.
Comment when I have an opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, so let me just back up real quick and make sure we all understand previously what happened, which was, there is ARPA money there, and I think I heard $4 million last time, is that approximately what is? But again, we've got projects that you'd like to earmark those for? Okay, and, and so, again, Larry, I'll let you go ahead and speak, just to make sure everyone understood what we were talking about.
Okay. This request is for essential equipment to provide adequate drinking water to the 25,000 citizens who are served by Public Service District Number One on Hilton Head, particularly during peak season and for emergency situations. This request was submitted early on to the committee that was formed to deal with the $37 million of ARPA funds, and this submission was joined by other submissions from other public service districts. However, I think this public service district had a specific request with a dollar amount associated with it. I believe the other submissions were for projects, but that they weren't well-developed with regard to what the cost would be. I don't believe any of the public service districts received any money from that first go-round, so I requested that PSD1 come back before this committee to see if we could discuss further what their needs were, and they're rather simple needs. One is a pump to increase the flow throughout the system, which is essential, and the other is an emergency generator for the reverse osmosis device, which is essential to provide quality drinking water to the citizens of that district, particularly in the event of a hurricane or an emergency that knocks the power system out. So this request is being renewed once again for about $500,000 for the generation product for the reverse osmosis system, and the other $500,000 is for the pump to increase the flow throughout the system. I asked the Chairman of PSD1, Frank Torano, to come today, he's in the audience, and Pete Nardi, who's the General Manager of PSD1, is here as well, and I know that Mr. Nardi would be happy to answer any questions that anybody on council may have with regard to this request. I consider it to be extremely important, and I would like to see unanimity on this committee for consideration of this to move forward with a recommendation for positive action to the full council at our next meeting. So I believe if there are any questions for Mr. Nardi or Mr. Torano, they'd be available to answer those.
Any questions, is anyone else that would like to speak? And I think, Senator Davis, your public comments before was a fact that even, even though that you've made a lot of promises to us, that this is one that you don't think money would be coming to because of the governor's Tier Three and Tier Four, and we're a Tier One county, so that means that probably will not be monies for any of the, the public service districts.
Yeah, I've come before, y'all before, and talked about when I thought funds might be available, I just wanted to make clear in this case, that even though I submitted a letter, and I'll do, the delegation will do what we can to facilitate that, that there's going to be a strong bias at the state level to have those monies go toward Tier Three and Tier Four. That's the only point I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just go ahead.
You said, Larry, that the two items were worth $500,000 apiece, but in our backup documentation, one is 700 and one's 300. Is that the more accurate number?
Yes.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, the 25,000 people, do they reside within the municipality of Hilton Head?
The, Pete Nardi, General Manager of the PSD. The Hilton Head PSD serves unincorporated Beaufort County as well as town of Hilton Head Island, so we serve the Windmill Harbor area, which is, remains unincorporated Beaufort County.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm going to support this for the following reasons. Number one, they've done their due diligence. They have come forward with a project that needs to be done, that will serve the people for which the ARPA funds are actually designated. Number two, ARPA funds are to be used in a timely fashion. We've received the money, once we obligate that money, that money needs to be spent in a timely fashion. There is no reason for it to sit around while we wait for other PSDs to come forward with whatever they believe they should have. Just because they have come forward first, doesn't mean we should wait till everybody else comes, so I'm going to support this to move on. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, look, look, Councilman Glover, go before me.
Yes, Councilman Glover, go ahead.
I can have a real rough following, but I cannot support this at this time because there's pretty allocation and offer of this, this budget line item is about $3 million. And I think if I heard the county administrator at our last meeting, he said we might be able to find another $1 million. That's what the $5 million came in. But it's really a $3 million line item and there are some rural interests and I must say this, that in the rural community, we cannot operate as fast as the PSA, PS, Public Service District in getting their requesting. A million dollars is actually taking away a third of the community for Hilton Head and you have another one in Tyler County to go. And there are some areas of interest on St. Helena and Ladies Island and that district that right now, one, one effort is actually 2.2 million dollars. But that's, that's, you know, but the, my concern is that if we allocate X amount of dollars now to this, a third of that money will actually be gone. I could support the generator at the time when it was 200,000, now it's a, a million, a half a million dollars. I'm very leery about that, but that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Glover. Anyone else? I think Ms. Howard?
I had a question probably for the administration. I knew there were some issues with fire service on St. Helena due to water. Have they applied, has Beaufort Jasper asked for money for that?
We've had no, we have no, we have had no other official applications for this $4 million dollars other than PSDs.
I can hear him, Ms. Howard, that, you know, but the group is actually working with the Jasper Water Authority at this time as well as the fire department.
Water, have they applied?
Getting together, moving forward.
York, can you repeat that? We're getting real hazy or real fuzzy.
Oh, okay. What I say is that there is a group that is working with Beaufort Jasper Water Authority at this time, putting together some numbers, but they're not in a position to make a presentation thus far, but they are working with the Beaufort Jasper Water Authority.
Just because they're not.
Well, I, I was against this initially because of what I thought needed to be done on St. Helena with the fire service, but because they haven't submitted anything at this time, I think I will support this at this time.
All right. And then let me just weigh in and then we'll ask for a motion is the fact that we do have 11 districts throughout our county. And if we, if we spend a million dollars in each district, that's 11 million, my math isn't very good, 11 million dollars that we'd be spending for, for those type of areas. I would like to see money dispersed evenly. However, you know, they're the first ones in, so do we, do we give them the money? So I think that, I think it should be spread evenly because I know that Mr. Dawson and Mr. Glover's area needs money as well as Mr. Fluelleing's area, that he's got some rural areas there in his that might look at. So at this point, what's the wishes and will of our committee? Is someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. I'd like to recommend approval of the Hilton Head Public Service District ARPA project request with a fiscal impact of $1 million for the equipment that was submitted by PSD1 for our approval.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Yes, more?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm hesitant to support this motion for the simple reason, with all the PSDs that we have out there, I think we might very well set a precedent to where all the PSDs will now come forward requesting funding for whatever project they might have. And, and we do have projects and areas in our rural communities that really are in need of, of funding and this ARPA money is available and we need to take advantage of the, the opportunity to actually get some things done in our rural community. So I'm, you know, the PSDs, in my opinion, they're capable of funding projects like this without asking for assistance from the county. And so just because these funds are available, I think we, we should be very careful how we open ourselves up to actually funding projects at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Greenway, do you remember in the first go-round when we formed the committee, how many PSDs did in fact submit requests for assistance?
I don't, I don't exactly, but the only one I recall would be PSD1.
Yeah, I thought there were two others. I think Ladies Island wanted some fire hydrants and I think there was another request from another area for stormwater relief, but I don't know if there was any.
There were no official submittals or projects put forward underneath that round one situation. It was talk about that. The fire hydrant issue on Ladies Island is going to be more than just adding fire hydrants that I've talked to Beaufort Jasper Water and Sanitation about that. In order to do that project, you're going to have to essentially rebuild the entire waterline system in that area, which is going to be a lot more money than we would have available in the ARPA account.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then FRIP, with the stormwater issue, I have requested that I be able to meet with the FRIP Public Service District. And I don't want to go into too much detail, but FRIP Island pays stormwater utility fees, but we do not use any of those fees to do stormwater improvement on FRIP. So that will be a potential option for us to work out with the FRIP PSD for drainage assistance out there that we would bring before you all as a separate item for your consideration authorization.
Thanks. Stu, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. Carl, what's happening, thank you, is that if you think about the aquifer and Savannah, rather than using river water is drawing down on the aquifer, which is then reducing it. And that particular district, one is one of the first ones and one of the hardest hit ones because of that, beyond their control what Savannah is doing. I think it's a good project. I think the fact that they came in and applied and it's a good use of the million dollars. We still have the 3 million left that we can spend in a, in a very wise way, including a lot of the projects that we're, we're talking about. So I do think it makes sense to approve this and send it on to council.
All right, any more comments before we vote? I think we'll do a roll call vote. No more comments. Ms. Brock, if you want mine?
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
With hesitancy, yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Okay. I think I got everybody.
No, Chair Mr. Lawson and Mr., well, Mr. Hervison is not voting.
No, sir, he's.
Mr. Somerville?
Somerville hasn't voted yet.
Councilmember Somerville?
Somerville votes yes.
We all sound sick.
And?
And Chairman Lawson?
No.
Got it. Three noes.
Six.
One, two, three, four, five, six, yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right, let's move on then and recommend approval of changes to the Beaufort County Procurement Code, Division Four, Section Two dash 509, authority and duties of the purchasing director and the CFO. I think Mr. Thomas?
I'll make a motion. Just to get things moving along, I'll make a motion that we accept this with the change that the title be amended to include CFO along with the additional comment at the, the last paragraph.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
And any comments? Seeing no comments, is there any objection? No objection. Motion passes. Your superman, Mr. Thomas, how about that? Let's move on then. Number 11, discussion reading, potential offer of payment to the final group of retirees for loss of post-retirement health insurance benefits. And Mr. Kevinney, you were going to be addressing this today.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon. I think everybody is familiar with this item, but broadly, you guys will remember that in 2016, council voted to eliminate a post-retiree health insurance benefit. Several folks filed a lawsuit, council voted to settle that lawsuit. When that was done, several folks who had not participated in the lawsuit came forward asking to be able to receive settlement funds. And so council agreed to do that. In the course of that process, others came forward saying they had not been able to participate and they wanted to participate. So in November of last year, council asked the legal department and HR to see what they could do about bringing forward a proposal to allow folks who retired between July 1st, 2016, when the benefit was terminated, and July 1st, 2021, what could be done to allow that group to participate? So work was done to identify those folks and we've identified those folks through HR in order to compensate these folks, this group, on the same basis that the last group was compensated. It'll cost the county approximately $186,000. And I understand that those funds are part of another item that's on your agenda. That's the amended budget ordinance that is on the agenda for tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Kevinney? And Mr. Kevinney, so this is the fourth group, I think, is what it is.
Well, it's actually a third batch. So the first batch was the two lawsuits.
Okay, so count those as one.
Those are lawsuits. Then the second batch were folks who did not participate in those lawsuits, but could have participated.
And the dates for those were?
I think as retired, folks who retired as late as July 1st, 2016, I think. Is that right, Emily? Yes, July 1st, 2016. So that batch has been compensated. And then we have folks who retired between 2000, July 1st, 2016 and July 1st, 2021. And that's what this batch is. Now, bear in mind that even this does not compensate everybody who was qualified to receive post-retiree health insurance benefits as of the date that the benefit was terminated, which was July 1st, 2016. Anybody who had worked with the county a minimum of 15 years at that point qualified. All right? So there are many folks who still work for the county who qualified as of July 1st, 2016, but who have not retired and are still working. All right? This is just a group of folks who retired between July 1st, 2016 and July 1st, 2021.
All right. Eric, you want to say something? No?
I hesitate to say something. I would encourage council, if you want to do this, that you make this the final set, you're able to save money if you'd have just gone to court, even if we'd have lost in court, we still wouldn't have been paying out as much money on this as we're doing right now. So.
Let me say this too, because I don't want you guys to say, well, you didn't tell us that, but let me tell you this. This group that's going to cost about $186,000 is a group of folks who retired and when they left, they said they were retiring. All right? That's what we have here. There is another group of folks who left the county, but didn't say they were retiring. They just resigned. Who knows if they went on to other jobs or they did something else. That group would, would cost the county, if the county wanted to include those folks, would cost the county about another 46,000, about $47,000 if you wanted to include that group in this group that's being compensated.
So can I just ask a quick question? This is a, this is a situation where people were hired by the county with the expectation that when they retired, they would have health benefits. Is that right?
It was a benefit.
Right, right. And when they retired, they would have that benefit continuing.
If they stayed with the county for the requisite period of time.
And then at a particular point in time, there was an action taken removing that benefit, even after the expectation that everybody joined the county with was that they would carry that into retirement. And what we're doing now is compensating those people who had that benefit taken away by the action in July 1st of 2016.
And what I'm saying is this doesn't.
There are more.
There are more.
Yeah, I get you. Right. There were a great many people affected by this.
Sure.
Okay.
And also, this doesn't count people that would retire after, what date?
After, it doesn't include folks who retired after July 1st, so July 3rd, 2021, they're not included in this group.
So anyone retired earlier this year or end of last year or not?
They're not included. And folks who are going to retire next year who had worked with the county at least 15 years as of July 1st, 2016 are not compensated either.
This continues to be a problem with retention here in the county because there are people who come here with the expectation, had the expectation when they would retire, they'd be treated fairly and what they were told when they were hired would still be in effect. And then they discovered it wasn't. So they may spend 20 years here working and then they discover, gee, I'm not going to get any health benefits until I'm 65 and now I'm 55. What will I do for 10 years? I'd better quit here, even though I'm happy and have worked 20 years, I'm going to go somewhere else within the state and get vested if I do five years there because their policy will give me health insurance till I reach 65 and I get to be Medicare age. So we have a real problem here with recruiting and retention, which may explain why we have so many vacancies here in the county. And I'm not directing that to you, Tom.
This is not my policy.
I just happen to be looking at you. But I mean, this is a real problem that we've created, well, that's, that was created here by an action by this deliberative body intentionally. And we're still living with the fallout six years later or maybe seven years later. And we're going to continue to live with that fallout because people keep leaving to go somewhere else to get vested so they can get that health insurance to carry them through the time they leave till they qualify for Medicare. And it's just, to me, an unjust and unfair situation.
Any more, any more comments or questions for Mr. Kevinney? Give it.
Just a comment, this is a thorny issue and muddy issue. I'm going to muddy it up some more, I apologize. But at the time that this came forward, my recollection was that Obamacare was in the process of being put in. So part of the argument was people don't need it because Obamacare will make up the difference. Obamacare didn't make up the difference. So I think Larry has a very valid point that we have somewhat of a moral obligation to figure out what is, what is fair for people.
I think there was another issue and I think it's that Gatsby 77 or something required the county to start carrying this unfunded liability on its books. I mean, I wasn't here then, but I've heard something along those lines, so.
I, I think it went even further than that. While the county took the action they took, because of the Affordable Care Act, the state had to say, we want to participate in this and the state did not. So while this county took that action fully thinking the state would allow this to happen, it didn't happen. So we're caught between a rock and hard place because as you said, this is a group, not the only group. There are going to be people coming again and again and again, because if we did it once, we're going to do it again. So the question is, would we be better spending our money piecemeal like this or take a look at how we do health benefits for our employees? And therefore, I would suggest we not do anything with us till we have a discussion regarding that.
regarding that. And that muddies up the water even more. I understand that.
Sounds like you're getting beyond the legal department's parameter, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Whitney, because fabulous job with it. I'm just joking.
Thank you. So at this point, any more discussion before we?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
All right. There's a lot that has been said that is totally correct. And I would say that what prompted all of this is that we, the council, realized that we made a mistake when we canceled the retirees' insurance coverage. That was our mistake, and we need to own up to it. And so that brought us to the point where we're now trying to deal with these different groups that are coming forward. I would say that initially, we made the mistake of not made, not going out and doing a good job of actually trying to identify all the people who were actually entitled to the supplement of refund. And whether it's us, the council, or whether it's HR, had we, had we done it correctly and reached out and identified all the folks who were available for this refund, then we wouldn't have had the one, two, three subsets that we're dealing with now. And then here we are now, looking at even another set here today, and there might be another set after this. So for us to say that we're going to cut it off here, I think, would again lead us to make a terrible mistake. We made the mistake, we should own up to it, we should cover the cost, whatever the cost might be. We owe it to these employees.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Anyone else? Mr. Glover, go ahead. Mr. Glover?
I am going to echo what Matta commented. It's a pass with me that we really need to do something about retirement. And also Larry, I think, talked about that as well. My feeling right now is that we should never have done the injustice of not providing this benefit to our employees. And certain reasons that Larry talked about, people would actually go. I want to get past this.
You're breaking up, Mr.?
The motion of the fund. I want to get past this, so I'm going to support the motion to move this forward. But I do want to entertain the conversation about providing health benefits for our retirees in the future. Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion? Has anyone made a motion?
No motion yet. So this last group here, 186,000, is that what, how much?
Yes, it's 186,000.
So how many people was it?
I don't remember exactly how many.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six people. Okay. But like I said, that doesn't include the folks who resigned, who qualified. So that's another group. And this is just as of July 21st, 2021.
Okay. All right. Is there any more discussion, or is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'd be happy to.
Mr. McKellen has made the motion?
Am I permitted to make the motion?
Aye.
Okay. I would like, thank you. Thank you in advance for that support. I would like to make a motion to have approval of the potential offer of payment to the final group of retirees as we know it now for loss of post-retirement health insurance benefits.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Floulling. All right. Any more discussion? Seeing no discussions. Thank you, Tom.
Just a comment. The way this is worded, this is the final group. As we know it now, I said.
All right. Is there, I should say this, any objections? We need to do a roll call vote? Anyone would like us to do a roll call vote on this?
Just a comment.
Yes, Mr. Robb, go ahead.
Larry, it seems to me Joe raised an interesting point. Whether it's final or not.
Yeah.
If we pass it as final, I don't know how it would ever get back on the table. So to me, the question is, do we want the word "final" in there, or do we want to treat this group and leave it open for some more evaluation? Joe's point.
I thought my additional language would clear that up, but I could take the "final" out and say, "payment to the group as we know it now of retirees," and take the word "final" out. Would that be okay?
That would be amending the motion.
Yeah.
I'd be all right with that amendment, sir.
Thank you. So I'll amend it, take out the word "final," and still say, "the group of retirees as we now know it." And is that an amendment that needs to be voted on?
Your motion and your way of amending your?
I amended my own motion, yeah.
You all just probably, if you're going to do this, because I know what's going to come next, I might go make a phone call, that I might have to spend staff resources to do these calculations again for another group and then another group. So what you all might want to consider doing, if you're going to pay everybody out that had the benefit and had lost the benefit, then you probably should just hold this action to date and tell the staff to go calculate what the number would look like for everybody that had the benefit and lost it, and come back with a proposal for you all to do the payout and end, and end this issue once and for all.
Yeah, I disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. There are people who are waiting for this payment, and this could take years, because these people, this is kind of like getting the PIS to Ds to apply for a grant. This could take years, because they have to get organized, they have to come in and make a claim. There's so much that has to be done. We can't make this group, which is organized, and expecting something.
This group is not organized. I take exception of that. This is.
Well, how are we going to pay them?
No one has made a claim in this group. This is something that council asked us to do. No one's, no one has, no one, to my knowledge, very few of the people on this list, if anyone, has made a request to have this done for them. So if you're going to do it, all I'm saying is, let's go ahead and do it in finality and come up with a number. It won't take years.
Yeah, I understand. These people don't know this is happening?
No, that's my understanding.
Is that accurate? These people haven't made any kind of a claim?
No.
Well, I haven't been involved in this particular project for very long. I know that more than one, I know of at least one person on this list who hasn't, has inquired about making a payment and inquired about it when the first, when the second round went out. Okay? I don't know if there are other folks on this list who are in that group or not.
Mr. Floullings, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I disagree with the idea of waiting on this. I think we have the resources and the information to apply this payment right now. If the staff would proceed with identifying other potential recipients of this kind of reparations, I hate to say it like that, but this kind of resolution or restitution for our prior action, sir, I think we could go ahead and do that at our, at our own leisure, at the staff's leisure, at the rate that they would normally address this kind of issue. I think we've got this in hand right now. Let's get it done and move on.
All right. And it is my understanding as chairman that this was a, it came as a request by at least one person to a council member. That council member then went and made the request to our staff to calculate that. So that's kind of where this came from. It wasn't, there was a group, there was not, I know of at least one person that came, came to a council person, and the council person then asked for, for this to be calculated. So we've got a, an amended motion on the floor, and let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, please. Ms. Brock?
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Floulling?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervashon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Chairman Passamet?
No.
Committee Chair Lawson?
No.
Two noes. Eight-two. Motion passes.
Okay, let's move on. I know we're dragging here, so, and now we're in number 12, ordinance to amend Beaufort County ordinance, 2023, 2022 to 33, for the fiscal year, hang on, 2022, 2023 fiscal year, Beaufort County budget to provide for additional appropriations to pay for fiscal year 22 carryovers. Use of fund balance for property acquisition and transportation projects, and the use of current year funds for capital projects and equipment purchases, to fees, refund, general obligation bonds, and other matters related thereto. Mr. Williams, you're back.
Chairman and council, again, good to see y'all again today. I got one more time up here. I tried to split the pot, the pie into three pots for this budget amendment. Basically, the first pot, which is two pages, which kind of looks like this, is, is, is carryovers from the 22 to 23. A lot of these, we're still having trouble getting vehicles and big, big equipment is Tiger Cats and stuff like that. Some of these are projects that we're rolling forward that didn't get completed, that need, still need funding during the current year. These total $2.5 million include bathrooms at Bruce Agerly Field and Old Burton Wells. Another, we ordered, we ordered an ambulance stream out last November. We couldn't get that done. These, this $2.5 million is carryovers, and they'll be used by fund balance. And so there's the listing and all the POs that are associated with it.
All right, this will go to council for three readings.
Three readings, and they're, they're kind of three parts of the amendment. It all kind of flows through on one ordinance as the three different pieces. So this is, this is the first piece of the pie. There's a third of the pie.
All right, so we have three more shots at this, but any questions for?
Yeah, but I got two more pieces of the pie.
Keep going, sorry.
Okay. So the next one is use of the fund balance for current year expenditure. So the purchase of 1505 North Street from the city of Beaufort, which is right there by the federal courthouse, which, which is for $630,000, that'd be using, and that's the sheet, that's the next sheet now on this, that one right there. So that's this one, that'd be using prior year fund balance. There's also a transportation project for $6 million, and this is to start teeing up some of these projects to get the engineering, surveying, planning work done beforehand. So hopefully, when we get the funding for either federal, state, or if we have a sales tax, we'll have them teed up and ready to go instead of kind of, we're on the back end of 2018. But this is to include triangle preliminary design, SC 46 improvements, reimagine Reboat Road, safety and intelligent transportation system. And that'd be $6 million out of fund balance. If y'all have any questions about this particular one, I do have Eric Clausen here, who would, or Jared, I don't know where Jared is, anyway. Anyway, but Eric is here, if y'all have any deeper questions on this portion of the budget amendment. Anybody?
Just a comment. We've been talking, okay?
Go ahead.
We've been talking about this for a while, and I think what it does is, it tees us up to better intersect federal and state monies that are flowing that we might not otherwise get, because we're not far enough downstream on the design. Secondly, I think there's a reasonable chance we get repaid, reimbursed from those as we go forward, when those projects actually materialize.
And if we pursue this with a transportation, 1% sales tax in two years down the road, we could put a provision in there, and legal counsel feels that it would be, we could get reimbursed for this $6 million, which would be good.
Councilman Floulling, go ahead.
Thank you. Have we approved that purchase from the city of Beaufort for 1505 North Street?
Yes.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's been.
It hasn't been approved yet.
Is that correct?
They have, Councilman Floulling, they have a committee, the PFC committee meeting, is on the agenda for that. This is, it's kind of like I have the 186,000 in there for the retiree payout, where we let you know about it. But I'm trying to throw my cast net to catch as many fish as I can, and this, that's one of the things in here. But it will be addressed in the PFC. And if, if it doesn't pass the PFC, I'll take it off, I'll take it off the budget amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. There's, so both those first two pieces of pie are use of prior year fund balance. Can you hear the next line? The last one is the use of current year funds, and it kind of, the first lot is about $1.7 million, and that's going to be an appropriation of our current ANH tax funds for projects that we have going on. A lot of y'all have seen the Boundary Street Tennis Court. I hope y'all have driven by it. It looks awesome. Shannon and Chuck are doing amazing things with that. But one thing that they didn't look when they redesigned it was the light poles and LED lighting. And to get all the new poles in and everything that they need for that was, is going to be $108,000, $108,900. Also, the All Joy Boat Landing, which, if any of y'all went to the public comment section at All Joy, needs to be addressed, and we have $1.1 million budgeted. That's not a, that is a close budget, but that would include the ramp, the dock, the parking lot, and also re-nourishing the beach there at All Joy Landing. We put $40,000 in there for the Pocket Park at the Witness Oak, right there by the federal courthouse, for that project. And then also, there, there've been a litany of boat landing repairs that needed to be done from the, from the surveys that we've had and the study that we've had. And to get Neil up and running on that would be roughly half a million dollars going down, and that's just from ANH tax. So I'm going to try and do this by funds. The next we need, we're wanting another FTE as a traffic engineer. So we have $90,000 budgeted, and this would be salary plus benefits for the remainder of the year. This is going to be funded by gap positions that we have within the county. There's also Southern Carolina Regional Development Alliance, which is a contract that we needed to include for $120,000. And like I showed y'all earlier, there's about, we're at 12%, we should be about 16%. I'm estimating there's going to be a surplus where it is on month number two right now. I'm not really sure. But we're expecting to pay that out of that. Same with the retiree litigation claims. We put the 186 already in that. So in case it passed, which it did, and hopefully it'll go to ordinance and pass, it's already in there. The St. Helena Island Performing Arts Center feasibility study was not actually funded out of ARPA, so we need to do a budget amendment to fund it out of ARPA for $66,000. The motor graders, we're in a dire situation on the Fusky. That motor grader is being held together with bubble gum, duct tape, and paper clips right now. And what Neil is choosing to do is put a generally-used motor grader from, from our five motor graders that we have over here, over there, and purchase a new motor grader. And where I'm proposing of getting the funding from, we have two bonds, a 13 bond and a 14 bond, that still have balances in them, $147,000 and $80,000. And to close those out, because I kind of feel like if we haven't used those bonds money proceeds by now, this would be a good use of it. And then there's also a capital fund surplus for $18,000. That, we close that out. In the last two are to refund into fees bonds, we have several GO bonds that are coming up that we can refund into fees, and there were surpluses in the debt service fund and the rural and critical, the purchase of real property funds of $1.7, $1.5 million. And we would use those surpluses to help refund into fees, which would be coming back in front of you for blessing at a later date. And that's the use of current year funds. But all three of those together make the big budget amendment pie. So do y'all have any questions?
Any questions? Yep, Mr.?
The only comment I have is on the defusing of the bonds. We're in an environment where interest rates are increasing, so it depends a little bit what the rates would be on the ones that we'd be retiring, because if you're closing the gap on the savings, plus if you have to rebond, then you've got the cost of the bond. So hopefully, taking that into consideration as to whether it makes sense to do it in an environment of rising interest rates.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll have that analysis before we refund or to fees, but we want to have, and this is just an option. It's just, it'll still come back to you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing no questions, again, this is an ordinance, so I need a motion then to move this Seeing no questions, again, this is an ordinance, so I need a motion then to move this to counsel for three readings.
Don't move.
Mr. Chairman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Howard, is there any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection? I see no objection, which means this passes ordinance two coming.
See you a little bit. Be right back.
All right. Number 13, recommend approval of an ordinance for a text amendment to Beaufort County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 2. And I think we have Ms. Patsy Green coming up, or, no, you don't.
Sorry, you get me. My apologies. This is a simple text amendment to our current ordinance that requires the tax map number on all deeds. There was an exception in that old ordinance for quick claim deeds. Registered deeds has brought this forward and we agreed to recommend that it be amended to include quick claim deeds.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Flouellen, go ahead.
Has the legal department evaluated this for compliance with state law and Supreme Court opinions?
It went through legal review.
It did go through legal review, but I'll let them answer your question. Is that it?
You did.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything in the state that's prohibiting from having included the kinds of deeds.
Could you hear that, Mr. Flouellen?
Yeah, I, I could, but I disagree with the opinion. Well, I, you know, I may very well have found no legal opinions that, that require this. The problem, of course, is that a quick claim deed is oftentimes used to divest one person of any interest that they have in a property, even though they don't know what property they might have an interest in. I can point to you at least half a dozen deeds I've found in my career as a title abstractor that reference any and all property I may own in Beaufort County. And the whole purpose of the quick claim deed is to just divest that person of any interest. Whether or not it has the ability to be referenced in the treasuries records or whether it has any bearing on any particular property, that's, I think, up to title abstract professionals or lawyers to determine. And so I, I'm going to vote against this. I just don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it would stop people from being able to divest their interest in property that may hold up lawful transfers of title. I think this is just a bad idea and it stops people from doing what they want to do, which should be anything legally allowed. And it's, under state law, it is legally allowed for them to file a quick claim deed, divesting themselves of any and all interest they may have. So I'm going to vote no.
And real quick, taking, push for time here, but this, this ordinance is, we're notifying property owners if a quick claim deed has been?
Well, the, the ordinance, no, it's a, it's a, there's an old 95 ordinance that, that reads simply, "All deeds except quick claim deeds should have that property identification or a tax map number on the deed." So the recommendation is to change that to "All deeds including quick claim deeds should have that on there."
So it'll identify the property associated with?
It's a property identifier, you know, possible help to attorneys and researchers. I will say, Mr. Flouellen is correct. Quick claim deeds are not general warranty deeds. Quick claim deeds are often used, you know, in other, in other realms, whether it's a property line dispute or a conveyance of, of an unknown interest. I'll also say that the practice of including the number on quick claim deeds is probably pretty widely used anyway. I mean, most, most deeds that come into the office have it on there anyway.
Right. I, I find that, you know, when that interest is, is a known quantity, when it regards a specific piece of property that has, has derivation, that they, 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 the conveyor, the grantor knows what that interest is, they oftentimes do put in not only, not only a PID, Property Identification Number, PIN, but also a derivation, how that interest became there. And so I, I just see this as a little bit of bureaucracy that's quite frankly unnecessary and, and just isn't really important. I don't, I don't think we should be spending our time doing this.
We can go either way on.
Any, any more comments? All right, do we have a motion to accept the changes?
I'll make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Obviously, Mr. Flouellen said he was going to be objection to this. Is there any reason for us, anyone else, that would be an objection and we need to do a roll call? Seeing no objection, Mr. Flouellen would, would be the one vote against. And again, this will move on. All right, this would move, let me just make sure that this is an ordinance, so this would have to be then three readings, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So this moved on to counsel. All right, number 14, let's move on to ordinance to amend Beaufort County ordinance 2023-33 for the fiscal year 2023 Beaufort County budget to provide for distributions from Myrtle Park Phase II Fund and other matters related to thereto. And this came up to, to counsel and was pushed back because I think some of the numbers didn't quite add up that were given and looked at. So it was something that we decided that time at, at counsel to push it back to finance. And I think, Mr. Hayes, that, Williams, you're up again here, is it?
Mr. Ward will do first and then.
Okay, all right.
I'll start over there, Hayes.
Afternoon. I'll make this as brief as possible. This item did go before counsel. It was then brought back to this finance committee for the purposes of staff providing specific information to the committee so that you are fully informed. We are not here to try and rebut any previous statements that were made by committee, which I'm sure you'll hear shortly, that there were promises made. So again, I want to reiterate, the purpose of Hayes and I today is to provide you with the facts behind the request. The purchase of Myrtle Park, that purchase was made in 2014 with finances from three different, or two different UTCs, as well as the sale of two different properties that the county owned that were completely unrelated. One of these funding sources was from a property over off of Buckwalter, which the town of Bluffton purchased from us. The second property was a property over on Ladies Island, which was the previous convenience center. Those two properties, the funding came from and was placed into an account in order to purchase the Myrtle Park property. I'm staying out of numbers when I discuss this because that's Hayes' world, not mine. So he will discover, he'll discuss the, the numbers behind it. After March of 2014, the property was being held. We didn't do anything with it, at which point the county received approval from council at the time to receive a loan in the amount of $4 million. We did nothing at that time with the $4 million and held on to it for another two years. We were paying interest on that loan, which again, Hayes will go over the specifics. Moving forward to May of 2022, we then sold the property, which was approved by this council in an amount around $600,000. So that is the general background of how we funded it and where we moved forward in the process. I'll allow Hayes to discuss the specifics on the numbers.
Can we ask questions now? Are you going to wait?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Something related to the legal side?
Normally, I won't say legally. Normally, when you sell property, goes into the general fund, correct?
Unless it's otherwise stipulated, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Williams?
So, good to see y'all again today. This was kind of an interesting thing. The Myrtle Park, you know, this has been a 10-year, over 10 fiscal years, you know, we've had, you know, six county administrators, five deputy county administrators, three CFOs. I mean, nobody, I think, really had a really good handle on where the money came from or where the money went to. I mean, there were things that were in there and they're not wrong. They, they were just, when you put a little bit of light on them, you're like, huh. They make you question some things. But let's start with the purchase of the property for $1.1 million. Now, at that time, there was about $771,000 that we'd already received, so there was a shortfall. And the county used the purchase, the, the sale of two other properties, which typically go into the general fund, to fund the purchase of that. And so that, that, so we got the property and then we had site development costs over the year of $410,000. We also had professional fees of $40,000 to $6,000. Now, one thing in our research that we found that was very interesting was that $4 million loan from Santee Cooper. It was interest only for two years. We had two payments of $80,000 for two years of interest that we paid out. Now, we didn't pay that out of this fund, which I would, if you were doing a project, I would include it in the fund that it was supposed to go to. But I wasn't here at that time. But it was paid out of the debt service fund. It's not wrong to pay it out of there. That's, debt service fund is to pay for debt service, but that's $160,000. So we have a total of, you know, total in it of $1.7 million. We had economic development contributions, UTCs and everything, $1.2 million, which left us about $539,000 in the hole, which is right above that black line. So looking at what the county really contributed, we had those two sales. And one sale was the five acres located in the Bluffton Technology Park for $459,000. And the old Ladies Island Convenience Center, which I went to for probably 20 years. And those properties were, the sale proceeds of those properties flowed through this fund. And also the 80,000 and the 80,000 of interest payments in the debt service fund, bringing the total amount that we really contributed at $828,000. Now, we have other funding proceeds as we got the, got the $4 million. And I think we're going to build the building and we decided not to build the building, so we gave the $4 million back. There again, I wasn't here. That decision was made, different counsel, different management, different administration. But there's also interest of about $31,000. Now, if you look at that interest for $31,000, that's over the life of, of the, of the loan. And so really, what we got, the main interest was the two years that we had the $4 million worth of loan proceeds sitting into this fund, which is about 91% of it total. The 28,000 of that is because we had a loan that we paid $160,000 worth of interest that we never used. So that's basically that. So basically, you come down, we have about, and then you sold the property, we have about $920,670,000 in there. You know, if you wanted to get everything right with the general fund and the debt service fund, you probably put 160 back into the debt service fund. You probably give 668,000 back to the general fund. And the, the, the net of what we sold it for with what we actually, the, the 539 that we had in it, it's really about $60,000. But give them the interest too on that, and that'd be 92. But there again, it's up to y'all as counsel and finance committee to recommend what y'all want me to do with this. Y'all could use it for affordable housing. Y'all could transfer the jobs, jobs in site fund. It's really kind of up to y'all. But there were other infinite factors that went into this that y'all needed to know to make a clear decision on this property. And the, the original worksheet that was given, a lot of these numbers are the same. But when you look at them closer, the story changes a little bit. And I want to give you the right story so y'all can make whatever decision y'all want to on it. But I think y'all need the whole picture and not just a picture, a, a limited picture. That's really all I have to say. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to address it.
Yep, Mr. Robin, go ahead.
I'll start. I guess two thoughts. However, we move all the numbers around, doesn't make any difference to me. It does seem to me that the Economic Development Corporation we put in place a couple of years ago has far achieved, achieved much greater than we anticipated it would do. And we look at the jobs, the investment, everything they had. So it, it doesn't bother me if we were to say, look, whether it's 500 or 600, 700,000 over one year or three years, that it would be a good investment for us to put it back into that, to grow that. It'll create jobs along the way, regardless of how we do it with the numbers. So I'm in favor of some amount of money, it sounds like on the order of 500, 600,000 that we might do.
I, I would like to add one thing to that. You know, we, we're, we're paying this year probably about 1 million, over $1 million for the EDC in both. We have $375,000 that we give to them for their operations. And we also have earmarked about $674,000. For the past five years, total spending plus what's budgeted for this year is about $4.3 million. But that's not including what we also pay to the Southern Carolina Alliance for Economic Development, which is another $600,000 over those five years. So I mean, if you ever have a question about Beaufort County puts its money where its mouth is, I mean, we've given, we're giving over the past five years about $5 million to Economic Development.
For a quarter of a billion dollars in capital investment, as I say, is pre-put ROI.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Howard.
I, I do have an issue with the money from the sale of the property and the interest paid. Not, I think it needs to go back to the general budget.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
Yeah, if my memory serves me correctly, I, I think when we, when we bought the two parcels at Myrtle Park, I, and I, I didn't do the research to try and pull up any of the documents from the time that we voted on this. But if my memory serves me correctly, I, I think we made the agreement that if those two parcels were ever sold, that the funds from the parcel would go to Economic Development. And, and I think that's what Stu was getting at in his opening statements. And I, and I think that's, that's what we said. And if that's what we said, then I think we ought to honor what we said. Now, if that's not what we said, then somebody tell me, tell me otherwise.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see that in writing, if that was not just that we promised. Because I, I, this was all done when I first got on council, so I don't recall. So I, I mean, I started in 2015, so.
And like you, I've heard that we have promised, but I haven't noticed going for the date yet or the meeting or, or any minutes that, that back that up. I've been waiting for that to, to happen, but have not seen that yet. But is there any other comments?
All right, Brian.
Mr. Flouellen, go ahead. And Mr. Glover, you'll be next.
Exactly. I remember it exactly as Gerald does. It may not have been a part of any particular motion, but it certainly was a matter, a matter of discussion at several council meetings and committee meetings, that this was money we were, we were giving over to the, to Economic Development. It didn't really matter to us that when, when it got sold, how much, because it was all going to Economic Development anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Flouellen. Mr. Glover?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try to talk to you to understand me. Although I, I do remember just like Joe and Brian said, that, and Stu, that we made a commitment to the economic development board that we will fund them and invest in them as they move forward. And we started with a small amount of funding and we basically said, as you grow, we will reinvest in you. So I remember that this discussion did come about and that we said, whether in writing or verbally, we did say that we will reinvest those monies into Economic Development.
I apologize for the delay. I was trying to pull up the exact minutes. So Finance Committee, on February 18th, 2020, there was a discussion held and where these funds would be distributed. At that time, it was stated by council that the funds, actually, Councilmember Rodman stated, "Any use of these funds would come back through us for approval." He said, "Correct." And at that time, the funds had not been, it had not been approved by committee or council for them to actually be placed with the EDC, but it was suggested that that's where the funds were going. Now, again, in the minutes, as well as watching it, at that time, the details of how the property was acquired and where those funds came from, I do not believe were presented, which is why we are here today, so that you can make a fully informed decision, right or wrong. so that you can make a fully informed decision, right or wrong. We wanted to make sure that the facts were told to this committee.
Good. Thank you. Mr. O'Toole, would you like to come up and, because again, the biggest thing, the reasons it came back to finance was for us to get all the answers and get all the dollar amounts and know exactly what we were talking about because it was so long, as Mr. Williams had said, and things had progressed since that time. So, Mr. O'Toole, thank you for coming today. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. And I am going to really try to make sure that I just stick to the facts and am constructive so that we can move forward. On February 18th, it was an 11-0 vote by the council that sits here today to move it to the full council once the sale was made. The opening comments said that the numbers didn't add up. Now, there's no way to interpret that other than it sounds like something shady was going on. But I will tell you that at the Economic Development Corporation, we relied on Alicia Holland to give us numbers. And I can hold these up. And if you could, if you could pull up the last slide that Hayes had up there, but Alicia Holland had provided us numbers. And every time we presented those to you, and in 2014, the revenues that created Myrtle Park were always shown to this council. They were always shown to you. In executive session, which I don't think, I'm out of order now because everything's come out, but in executive session in August 2019, we consistently showed you that the funds used to acquire this property were paid for by a sale of other county property. And so, you can expect that the wisdom of the council at the time was to say, let's take our assets and roll them into Economic Development. And so, when you voted on February 18th, your thought was the same. Let's take our chips and roll them into the next Economic Development project. The other piece that's being added in now, which is a little shocking to me because it's a management decision that was made in 2016 and 2018 by different administrators. And so, now, there's, you know, the subject is introduced as the numbers didn't quite add up. But what I think staff is trying to do is ding us another $160,000 by saying they didn't agree with the management decision that was made at the time to book those to the debt service fund. So, I don't think, I don't, and here's the other catch. Because if you could, oh, we don't have any staff here to show it. But if you put up the piece that Hayes had shown you earlier, it showed that the pooled cash is now 920,000. But I can show you on three occasions where I said, please confirm the math because I didn't want to, I didn't want to put the county in a difficult spot of using U T C funds that didn't exist. So, I asked Hayes three times, and he confirmed that the pooled cash was 727,000. And today, you can see it's 920,000. So, that's a surprise to me. Now, on February 18th, you said, on 2020, you said that you would like to take the proceeds and roll them into the site and job funds. I think for the reasons that Councilman Rodman laid out, because we are good fiduciaries of the county's money, and we are locked into creating investments and good jobs for county residents. And for that, I don't think we should be punished. The other piece was that when you did your last budget, we were dinged on the site and job fund by a half, a half of one mill. No, a five tenths of one mill. And the administrator explained that he found out that you can't do mills on the half. They have to be two or three. So, at your retreat last November, you said, let's take the balance of pooled funds and make the Economic Development hole. Or you didn't say that the county administrator coming out of lunch, and you can see it on the video, the administrator said that we'll make you a hole with the balance of pooled funds. So, our request would be, as we, and we made this A I S, we made this request on June 10th of this year, and we're almost into October, and we're fighting. And that's the way it feels to me, and I don't get it. I feel like I'm a running back for your team. I'm running well with the ball, and I'm getting tripped up. And I'd like to resolve it, and I appreciate your consideration and will accept your good judgment. Thank you.
Mr. Robin, go ahead, and then we'll.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Two parts. One is that we return the monies to the various funds as Hayes has suggested. And secondly, we take, let's say, $600,000 and add it to item number 12, which is the ordinance that we're going through to amend to include a variety of other things. And I think that'll get us where we need, the $600,000 for the EDC. And we don't have to get tied up in all of this back and forth about who shot John and where the money was and who's entitled to it.
All right. Motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Flouelling. Is any more discussion? All right. And again, anything that passes will have to go to council for three readings. So, is there any objection to the motion on the floor? I don't see or hear any objection, so the ordinance passes to send to council.
Well, that's the amendment. I was suggesting that we folded, they can do it later. I was suggesting we just fold it into 12, item 12, which is ongoing. Anyway, that's fine. Let it stand just the way we voted. That's fine. Okay. We got to get finished.
Let's move on. Yes. And number 15, ordinance to establish a regional housing trust fund and other matters related thereto. Motion passed.
And just to be clear, that $600,000 would go to the jobs and jobs and site fund, and the rest of it would go to the, then you pay back the debt service fund, and the rest would go to the general fund.
It was to pay back all the funds that were listed that you had there, but then add $600,000 to our. We got it. I know what to do. Yeah. Out of general fund.
If it pleases the committee, we can take these next three items all as one.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
But we do need to correct item 16. That's a mistake because currently on the agenda, item 16 and 17 read as essentially the same item. Item 16 should, and it's correct in the backup material, otherwise, I wouldn't be able to do this. It should be a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with Community Works to provide administration and management support for a designated regional housing trust fund. So, it's to enter into an agreement with Community Works to actually operate the regional housing trust fund. As many of you know, over the past several years, we have been working on establishing a regional housing trust fund to deal with workforce, affordable housing issues. And we have finally reached that point for decision for you all now. And that is to, there's three items. Recommend an ordinance to establish the regional housing trust fund. Recommend approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with Community Works to operate the regional housing trust fund. And a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jashbury County, Town of Hilton Head Island, Town of Bluffton, Town of Port Royal, City of Beaufort, City of Hardyville, City, to jointly create fund and operate regional housing trust fund. Again, another typo in that title as well, but we'll correct those for the agenda.
Have a question?
Yes. Go ahead.
And everybody who is mentioned here is contributing 3% of their allocation of ARPR in year one. And Beaufort County is contributing 1.119,523 in year one. What's the total?
The total amount to be raised?
Two million.
Did we look at the chart? Let us look at the chart and the backup material.
It's page 52.
The total would be.
Page 52?
Right. The total in year one is $3,443,127.
Okay.
All right. You said that we're handling all three of these at the same time. Two are ordinances and one is a resolution.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass all three, please.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. City of Beaufort and the Town of Port Royal have shown their support by voting last week.
Seeing no more discussion, is there any objection to us passing 15, 16, and 17 all as one? Objection, sir. All right. So, we have one objection? All right. Do we need to do a roll call? I do not think so. So, we have one objection, Mr. Hervishon. Otherwise, it's all yes votes. So, motion passes. All right. Anything else needs to come before this committee? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for your patience today.
We'll start PFC.